Good evening. Today is Monday, October 21st, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. And at this time, I'll go ahead and make a motion for the meeting to begin. And roll call. Councilmember Adam. Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Bucelado.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza.
Here.
Mayor Walter is here. Thank you all very much. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. And council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed upon a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noted for discussion or legal action. I do have a request to speak. Mr. Keith Eaton.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Keith Eaton. And tonight, I'm going to talk to you about a couple of things. Same topic, actually. Make a Difference Day. So first, as the president of the Rotary, I just wanted to say what an amazing job that this team did with Make a Difference Day. We chose the Adamsville Cemetery as the project. At one time, at least 28 people were out there cleaning, so we went from front to back, cleaned it. After that, as we were going Ledesma Landscape, come out, sprayed pre-emergent to help with the weeds for next year, absolutely free. On the same topic, but as the mayor-elect, how proud I am to be a part of this organization and the team that put everything together. And it was from the clapping and cheering as people came into the building to help, and then to see over 200 people wanting to make a difference. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you, council and staff. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. I do not have any additional requests to speak at this time. There will be a second call to the public at the end. And moving on to item six. Item six A, first we'll have a public hearing to receive comments concerning a Series Six bar license application. This was submitted by Jared Michael Rapinski for the 1866 saloon. And this is proposed at 321 North Main Street, Florence, Arizona, and to forward a recommendation of approval of said license to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, the clerk's office did receive the application. We not only posted the application, and it has remained posted for 20 days. We did receive no negative or positive comments from the public. We did send our notices out to staff to make sure that it was consistent with practices. There were no negative comments received from staff. Staff is recommending that we put forth a recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control of approval. Please let me know if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that has anything that they would like to say upon the matter at this time? Any comments or questions by council? Councilmember Bucelado.
I just wanted to know on the record, this business has pulled any permits for renovations? As I know, that building had been down for 15, 20 years.
This is an application for a liquor license, but I will ask.
Meaning, are they ready to utilize said license? That's the reason why I'm asking.
I'll ask Community Development Director, Mr. Monroe, to respond to the question regarding permits that were building.
There have not been permits pulled for this building. They have been in communication with the department about what is needed to secure those permits.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And just so you know, they cannot use their liquor license until they have a certificate of occupancy.
Are there any other questions or comments for the public hearing portion? Closing the public hearing. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the, let's see here. Approve the application that was submitted by Jared Michael Rapinski for the 1866 saloon proposed at 321 North Main Street, Florence, Arizona, and afford the recommendation of approval of said license to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item B is presentation on Heritage Park Playground Structure and, or structure design and accessible equipment details. Mr. Paul King.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we're bringing you to an item that we've been working on for some time. The two playgrounds at Heritage Park, the two-to-five-year-old and the five-to-12-year-old playground sets are being replaced with a focus on inclusive play. And we've been working with Arizona Recreation Design and Unlimited Play, which is a nonprofit organization that specifically works on these playgrounds, to bring you and the Florence community the best possible, unique, inclusive playgrounds that we can possibly give for the funding that we have. The funding, of course, as you recall, $250,000 is generated from our capital fund plan for this fiscal year. And then $50,000 was donated by Florence Copper. Just wanted to mention that as another appreciation for their generosity. It helps add to the amount of and the quality of the equipment that we're going to be receiving. So tonight, you're going to go through, we're going to go through a presentation. I'm going to ask Arizona Recreation Design to do that. They're here with two of their members here. One's the president, Tim Nolan, and his daughter, who's been aggressively after this plan for us, Lindsay Nolan. And so I'll ask Lindsay Nolan to come up. Arizona Recreation Design has a long history of working with communities, towns, HOAs, and school districts in Arizona to do plans and designs and implement these programs, these playgrounds throughout the state. So have a quality reputation. I'm so glad to have them on board. And there are some longer videos in this, so we'll let Lindsay go through the presentation, and we'll take your comments and questions after.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. It's such a great opportunity to be here and speak to you a little bit more about the design for Heritage Park. A little bit more about Arizona Recreation Design. We have been in business since 2010 designing playgrounds all over Arizona. In the past few years, inclusive playgrounds have become more and more important and more, we've had more of an emphasis internally in our office about designing them and bringing them to as many towns as we can. And a great benefit to us has been partnering with a nonprofit organization called Unlimited Play, who has been designing inclusive playgrounds for the past 20 years. They have firsthand experience. Their founder had a son who was in a wheelchair, and she, when she would take her son to the playground, would often have roadblocks that would stop them from effectively playing on the, on the structure. And she has since added many members to her team that have various different limitations, whether through their own children, grandchildren, or through their own disabilities, that have collectively shared so much knowledge with us on how to design an inclusive playground, and also how to make it a reality to towns like Florence. So I'm going to start and give a little bit more information about Unlimited Play. So the reason why inclusive play matters is because the percentage of people and children that have disabilities is far more than, I think, what the average person would guess right off the bat. Over 12% of children between the ages of six and 14 have a disability. And that's not always just a physical disability, being in a wheelchair or some kind of mobility device. There is a wide range of different disabilities and different needs that each child has in order to play effectively on a playground. So our goal is to make sure that all of these kids have the same opportunity to play. So next, I'm going to show a video that's from Unlimited Play, and just kind of shows the magic of what happens when one of these playgrounds is unveiled in a community. It really is a special destination that will bring families from across the town and even further. And it just shows what really happens when limitations are forgotten and kids of all abilities can, can have that opportunity.
We have a tagline that we use that I've loved throughout the years, and it's where limitations are forgotten and differences are celebrated. I can't change my son. I can't change the differences that you see, but what an amazing thing if we can start to celebrate those differences.
I can just let Gracie go and drive, and kids will just come up and talk to her. But at other playgrounds, you won't see that happen, but there's just something magical about these playgrounds.
Brayden is a 12-year-old autistic boy. His disabilities are basically, you know, nonverbal in the autistic spectrum. Kids like my son and kids with special needs absolutely have an equal opportunity to play on this playground.
So my son was born with a disability that puts him in a wheelchair. And pretty much everything we do is difficult for Zach. Inclusive playgrounds suddenly started to break down those barriers. The little kids don't care anymore. They realize that Zach can do absolutely everything they can do.
Probably my favorite memory. When all the kids come running in. You know, you had the same old mainstream kids side by side playing. You don't see that every day.
Over the years, I've been inspired to continue Unlimited Play by so many moments that I get to see, its families get to watch as their children play for the very first time.
Gracie, how does this playground make you feel?
Oh, Gracie.
So that's one of my favorite videos, just depicting the magic that happens at these playgrounds. Unlimited Play is so much more than just the ADA compliance and making sure that you meet American Disabilities Act. They're taking it much further into what truly makes a playground inclusive for kids of all different types of abilities. And being able to see children playing side by side, one in a wheelchair, one able-bodied, and just the variety of different abilities is really a special thing. Oh, let me get to the next one. So we were lucky enough to have one Unlimited Play project in Cholo, Arizona, prior to this one. And it was just so special to be able to see the community come out at the grand opening. And everyone was so thankful that the park was there. And they said, you know, there's never been anything like this in this town. And we, the community members, mentioned that they felt that there wasn't a space for them previously. And when the park opened up, they felt very much appreciated because they were taken into account for the design of the park. And they felt sort of common ownership because they knew that it was designed for them and that it was a safe space for them and their families to go to. And that's just restating Unlimited Play's mission, that together, we believe in designing playgrounds where limitations are forgotten and differences are celebrated. And I have one more quick video. This is going to be a video of that Unlimited Play project that we did in Cholo, just to show you an Arizona example. The playgrounds at Heritage Park will be very similar to this one, and we'll share a lot of commonalities in the different types of inclusive equipment that's in the structure. So Unlimited Play has several different principles that they have gathered over the years in designing playgrounds that contribute to what make a playground fully inclusive in their criteria. One of them is designing with imagination, encouraging social inclusion, giving independence, providing active motion, creating graduated complexity, and then making it all fun. So I'll quickly go through each of those principles and just touch on how we have incorporated them in the designs for Heritage Park to give you a fully inclusive, well-rounded park. The first one is designing with imagination. And this one is really all about theming and creativity in the styling of the components. When there's components that are themed, it contributes to kids playing and being imaginative, and not just seeing a climber and thinking, okay, that's a climber, and seeing a slide and thinking, okay, that's definitely for sliding. When they see, you know, boulders and logs and different natural elements that might make them feel like they are out in nature, and it just contributes to them having more well-rounded play and gives them more imagination when they're at the playground. And the next one is encouraging social inclusion. So Unlimited Play focuses a lot on parallel play, which is the concept of able-bodied kids and kids with disabilities playing side by side, but having the same common interaction and participating in the same type of activity. So in these photos here, you see an example of two children playing side by side with an activity panel, and they're able to interact and share in that same experience. And their disability is not affecting them being able to participate in the activity. And then on the right, you see an overhead ladder, monkey bar, if you will, where one is designed to be at wheelchair height, and the other is designed at a standard height. And that allows kids of different abilities to play side by side and be, you know, interacting and having the same overall experience. And they're not limited, one versus the other, on who can play or how they can play. The next one is giving independence. And this is something that parents typically think Unlimited Play for greatly, because often kids with disabilities are spending their day with a caregiver, with a parent, and they don't have a lot of independence to maneuver on their own. But because these inclusive playgrounds have ramps all the way throughout the play structure and all the way to the highest level, kids can be free to move on their own, and they're not limited. And they, they know that they don't have to always be looking back to where's my mom or where's my caregiver. So it just lets them be more free and have more confidence on the playground. And here's just a couple of pictures showing that in, in reality, you see a couple of kids in wheelchairs on their own. There's no parents, and they're just having a great time. They're interacting and playing. And when that happens, kids are just free to, to be on their own and to explore and make new friends. And we've included ramps in the Heritage Park structures all the way throughout. So there's nowhere on either of the playgrounds for the two-to-five age group or the five-to-12 age group that a wheelchair would not be able to reach. And another principle is providing active motion. So Unlimited Play has been very beneficial in teaching us about why all of these principles matter. And there's a lot of research, especially for the autism spectrum, that providing active motion, like spinning and swinging and sliding, rocking, those are very helpful and help promote the development further of children that are on the spectrum. So Unlimited Play has designed several products that we have available to us. The one on the bottom left is called the Zoom Twist Spinner. It's a rope cone-shaped spinner that has a hard decking on the bottom. And it also has an opening in it that allows kids in wheelchairs to transfer out of their chair and sit inside, because there's an opening in the rope that allows them to enter inside of the cone. And then they can enjoy that sensation just like every other kid. We also have a variety of different swing types. On the bottom right is an example of some of the swings that we would have. There's an ADA seat, which is really great. It allows users to be transferred onto the chair and then buckled in, and then, you know, with the help of a caregiver, they're able to swing right alongside an able-bodied child. And the next principle is creating graduated complexity. So this goes along with the parallel play, where kids are playing side by side at their own comfort level. Unlimited Play promotes putting similar activities of different challenge levels right next to each other. So they'll have what's considered an easy component next to a medium and next to a hard. And that allows kids to, again, experience the same overall sensation, but not feel like their activities are secluded on one end of the play structure. They're ingrained throughout the structure, right alongside with the able-bodied components. So here, you just see an example of three overhead climbers that are at different levels. The left is sort of a more conservative height. The middle is a more advanced height. And then on the right, you see therapeutic rings, which are at wheelchair height, so that even if you're in a wheelchair, you can still experience that activity and be side by side with friends of all different abilities. And the next principle is sensory-focused play. And we have so many different awesome activities for sensory, whether it's on our ramps. We have lots of different visual things where you might see, you might look through glasses and see different colors, or you might have an underwater scene through one of those little windows in the ramps. There's also an outer space window, so it just kind of promotes different senses that as a child is on the ramp, if they need to take a break before they get to the next platform, they still have play available to them. So they're not feeling like, I'm stuck on the ramp and I have nothing to do, and my friends are up on the top having all this fun. They still have activity built into every nook and cranny of the play structure. On the left is a Quiet Grove, which is a respite area that was designed specifically with kids on the autism spectrum in mind. It's meant to be turned away from the play structure, and if a child is getting overstimulated, then they or their caregiver can remove them, bring them to this quiet grove, give them an opportunity to calm down and relax, and then hopefully rejoin the playground once they accomplish that. So the Quiet Grove has noise-reducing qualities to it, and it also has a couple calming activities, like fidget spinners and different clicking kind of activities that are, in the research and development, showed to, to provide that calming experience for them. We also have a roller slide, which is on the top right, which is great for kids with cochlear issues. So that sensation is supposed to be really beneficial to them. And then just lots of different other sensory activities. This one is a living art panel, and there's different buttons on there that have different sounds. So there's a wolf howling, which is what we just heard, the little boy just playing and howling along with the wolf there, just lots of different activities that are built into the playground. And when we combine all that together, we make a really fun and well-rounded play structure that is inviting for kids of all abilities and just truly takes away any limitations that they might feel on a day-to-day basis. They can come to this playground and know that they can experience it and that it was made with them in mind. So now I'm going to show you some exciting renderings and just some 2D overhead images of the designs for Heritage Park. So this one here is the larger park for ages five to 12, and it shows with the red arrows, those are all ramped platforms. And that shows that kids in wheelchairs can get all the way to the very top of the playground, which is six feet tall. So the 72 is in inches. So it's pretty substantial, and getting up to that height is also really great because able-bodied kids will find appreciation in that, too. Whereas if it was just at, you know, 24 inches at the max, that may not provide as much fun for an able-bodied kid. They want to get up, you know, pretty high and have a lot of challenging climbers and slides. So the fact that able-bodied kids are going to be happy, and children with a range of disabilities also, is, is amazing. And here in the shaded orange region is where the rubber surfacing will be covering. So it will allow children to directly access the area and then have an accessible pathway to the swing, to all of the slide exits, and to the rope spinner. And here's just a couple of renderings showing the five-to-12 age play structure. Again, we've got the ramps going all the way throughout, and we've got the Zoom Twist Spinner on the right-hand side. And then we've got swings with one belt seat for able-bodied children, and then we have the ADA seat on the left. And just a variety of all different kinds of slides and climbers. We did incorporate a lot of the tree and natural themes into it, which is promoting that imagination as well. Just a couple more photos here. And then this is the play structure for ages two to five, which again, is fully ramped. It's a smaller play structure just because the footprint of the area is quite smaller, but it is fully ramped. But it is fully ramped. And it has the Quiet Grove as well, which is that dedicated space for children who are overstimulated to go and get some respite. And now I'm just going to show a little bit more detail about some of the featured components, which are certified by Unlimited Play and are also included in the Heritage Park designs. So we did, I already touched on the Zoom Twist Spinner a little bit ago, but here's just another image of it. And you can see the opening in the rope on the left-hand side, which is the access point for kids in wheelchairs to transfer out of. And then here's some zoomed-in images of our Unlimited Play ramps, which have lots of sensory and tactile components added into them. You see on the left-hand side, those are the tactile components. So there's kind of like a marbled activity where kids can run their hands over it and feel different sensations. And then on the right-hand side are the sensory activities, which shows the outer space window and all of those chimes that you see on the ramp. If kids are to, were to pull back the little hammer striker that's on them and then release it, it does create a nice musical chime. So there's play activity all the way through these ramps. The roller slide, which I touched on, is such an awesome component. Kids of all abilities love it. And then we've got elevated transfer decks, which are really important also on a ramped structure. If a child is on the structure on their wheelchair, they still need an opportunity to transfer out of it to be able to go down a slide. So these are built into the structure at an elevated point where a child in a wheelchair would just get to the level that they are at, that they want to go down in activity. And then they can transfer right off of their chair and go down the slide. And then we've got several new edge play activities, which that is our natural urban theme. We've got log slices and rock boulders, which those look and feel like real rocks. That's the one, the third image there. And then we've got other paneling that kind of contributes to an overall tree fort theme. And then we've got the Quiet Grove, which is that dedicated space for kids on the spectrum or really any child that just needs a moment to break away from the activity on the playground. Sometimes it is a sensory overload. There's a lot of noise and a lot of fast-moving kids. So I think even sometimes we've heard that a parent that has multiple children that are playing, if one gets overstimulated, if the Quiet Grove isn't there, they've often had to just take their whole family home because they just know that it's not going to necessarily get better. So all kids end up having to leave, which is unfortunate. So with a place like this, it at least gives them that opportunity to go and try to relax and then hopefully get back to playing. And I think there's actually a video of the Quiet Grove, which shows it in action. So it's just a good video to kind of depict what that scenario might look like and how just having an opportunity to step away for a minute can sometimes make or break the experience at a playground. And you could saw in the video that he went right back to playing, which is an awesome opportunity. It's a new component for us that Unlimited Play has unveiled in the past few years. And they've had awesome experiences and feedback so far. And lastly, just a couple activities for the younger kids as well, similar sensory activities and imaginative and inclusive activities as well. And that's all I've got. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Any questions? I'd be happy to take them.
So thank you, Mayor, members of council, for indulging us in that detailed presentation. We want to make sure that you had a good understanding of how we put this all together, the considerations that we went through, and the professional organizations that we worked with to do it. One of the things that we kept in mind, and I asked Lindsay and Tim to keep in mind as they were going through this process, is that we are autism-certified town. And we need to provide that. The Quiet Grove really spoke to me and provided that element that we really need here to brag about being that. We only want to extend to the community the opportunity, but we want to make sure that we understand the weight that being autism-certified has on the town. And we've got that role to play and that standard to meet. So we're happy about that. But again, Lindsay and I can answer any questions and take any comments from you at this time.
I have a question and a comment. The one question I have is, is it possible to expand upon the swing opportunities that were in the presentation? Because I noticed that there was, you know, one of each type of swing. And I think that it would be fantastic if we could have at least two of each type of
So with the current footprint of the play structures, we really maximized and used as much space as we could. It's absolutely possible. We would probably have to expand the existing footprint slightly in order to make room for it, but it's absolutely possible. And that's something that I think with a Phase Two project could realistically be done with not too much more effort.
Okay. When you say Phase Two, like that would be down the road in the future? Or could that happen with this initial project?
So the space that we have right now, there's just not the room to fit a whole another bay. The thing with swings, I think that most people don't realize, is the use zone that's required for their safety. So swing sets are typically eight feet high on the top beam. And for our, you know, ASTM criteria, we have to have two times the height of the beam in both directions. So there has to be 32 feet free and clear to fit swings. And then there has to be six feet fully around each side of it. So with the current footprint, there's not necessarily the room to do that. But I mean, we could, we could look back.
Could we expand upon the footprint? Or have that conversation? And the only, this is coming from a place, as somebody who has spent 24 years working with children and observing them on the playground, those are definitely engagement opportunities for them. And I can see that being a benefit.
I was, I was just going to chime in and say that from my experience as a mom, and this is only coming from my own personal, I have driven many miles because my kids wanted to use the swings. And so, I mean, even if we have something in between the two playsets that, because of the space, that elongates, and I loved some of the sort of models that you showed of having, where you have like the zip line-y type swing. Or even I've seen them up in Queen Creek where they have almost like, I don't know how to describe it. It's almost like a little carriage where you have two seats, you know what I'm talking about, where they swing back and forth, which is an inclusive device, but it's also a swing. And I think things like that are great, especially when I see the zero, the two to five age range with no swings. I'm like, that, you need swings in that, or else you have to have something where there's swings, in my opinion. I know that's a huge draw for kids, huge, huge draw. They fight about it at playgrounds all the time. So I don't know if there's a way to work it in. I don't want to see it in a Phase Two personally. I don't know if that means we have to redesign, reconfigure, re-expand. I don't know what that looks like. But to me, that's something that has, should be included. If we're going to do this, you got to do it right.
They're, they're great comments. And we did have some long conversations on, on how do we do what we can with our budget that we have? The entire goal was to make the entire playground accessible to everybody. And that, that does come at a pretty large cost. It eats into our budget quite a bit. To have additional equipment, such as, you know, additional climbers, expanding the footprint of the playground is an option for another project. One of the challenges that we have in front of us is, on your consent item tonight, is the Poor in Place Playground surfacing. And that is a CDBG grant-funded project that has a time limit of first part of January. So we are under a little bit of a time crunch to get this particular project completed so that we can do the Poor in Place by January. That said, there is space out there for additional equipment if the town desires to do that.
My second and only finalized comment is, we are in Arizona and most of our year is surrounded by high temperatures and sun. I was wondering what we could do to expand upon the shade, especially on the rolling
So the existing shade structures currently are planned to remain, and they do cover a pretty decent footprint. We did our best to orient the ramps in such a way that they would be consolidated under as much of the shade as possible. The inherent thing with ramps is that they are large and they take up a big footprint. So they're no more than a one to 12 pitch. So basically, for every 12 feet of the ramp, we're only able to rise one foot. So to get all the way down from base level to get up to six feet, that takes up a lot of room. So the park is slightly outside of the perimeter of the shade currently. And as Paul mentioned, we did maximize every bit of the budget that we were allocated. There's always opportunity to add more shade later. But as it is currently, I don't know that there's room in the budget to just add on a whole nother shade. But both of the existing ones in both of the playgrounds will remain, and they do cover a significant portion of the footprint.
That's helpful to know. I was just basing it off of what I observed in the video. So thank you for the additional information.
Sure, of course. And I know the overhead views don't necessarily depict exactly where the shades are. And then in the renderings as well, sometimes when you add the shade in them, it casts shadows, so you can't see the detail of the play structure. So I did remove the shades from the renderings just so you could see the structures in more detail. But those, both of those will remain.
Thank you. I know Councilmember Larson and then Councilmember Bucholato.
I was just going to say, first of all, I think it's great and I think it's inclusive for all children. So I think that's really good. I also have the same comment about the swings. Two swings in a park, you're asking for fights, especially when one of them is for able-bodied children and one of them is not. So I don't know if you guys are putting, you know, a bigger kid's swing on the age group appropriate and then a toddler's swing on the other side, but I think that would help for now. And I think I have the same thing as you were saying, is it's the rolling slide, not necessarily the ramp. The rolling slide with the metal rollers for the kids to slide down is what, is that what you were talking about, too? Needing shade. We used to have this massive metal slide at the elementary school growing up, and we all have like third-degree burns on our backs from it.
Oh, sure.
It definitely happens here. They just took that out like 10 years ago because we were all, yeah, we were all sabotaged by that slide. So just for safety purposes, that definitely would need to be covered because those rollers get pretty hot.
Absolutely.
But other than that, I think it's great. And my only other question is, is it going to be fenced in? Because that has been my number-one complaint with all of our parks here. None of them are completely fenced in. And when you have children, I know on the spectrum firsthand, some are elopers. And I'm a mother to one, and he will get out. And I cannot run anymore. So.
So great comments, great questions. The fencing question kind of came up later in our design discussions. We, we don't have it included in the current projects. That said, we certainly can install it into our CIP plan for next fiscal year if the council would like us to do that. There's, from an industry standard perspective, I did some research, fencing playgrounds is recommended and not recommended by certain, depending on the profession you ask. And so the arguments that I heard were, A, the obvious one, which is it prevents children from wandering off. But the other argument is it actually is a deterrent because if the kids do get out over the fence, parents would have to go potentially, or grandparents or any caretaker, depending on their ability, may have to go through the gate, which could be a decent distance away. So it can be an unintended consequence of sorts sometimes. But we'll continue to do the research and get some, get some estimates on cost for that as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Neal?
I honestly think it is a great idea. It's just, once again, we're at a point to where we kind of halfway go at something. And it kind of sounds like there's so many more ideas that just popped up from this right here. And this old budget won't allow this, or this won't allow that. Why don't we sit down in the room and getting this all the way hammered out, especially for the kids in the town? It needs to be bigger. Needs more stuff. I worked security at a school, and trust me, I was on the playground every day for fights over a swing. It, it sounds like it needs more thought to it. Like I said, I hate to be the party pooper, but it kind of gets old to have stuff. Well, we'll do this now and then maybe later we'll do this. And maybe later never comes. On the playground for the kids, the Florence, I think it should be more thought and the shade and more swings and everything should come in. And it shouldn't be a maybe later to it at all. I just, I don't like that part about it. Because if you're going to give them kids a half of a playground, then they're going to never get completed. That is what I'm trying to avoid.
Councilmember Neal, as you were talking, I just happened to be looking your way and I saw our finance director. Can you talk to us about potential options?
We can definitely work with Paul and the team to bring up some proposals and bring them back to you and find some available funding for that, the swings.
Now, Paul, I understand what you're saying about the footprint needing to be approved because we have to have that CDBG project in the works. because we have to have that CDBG project in the works by January. Is there a way between now and the next council meeting to coordinate between Paul and AZ Rec to come back to council to discuss potentially expanding the footprint to accommodate additional swings?
So, the answer is, yes, we can engage finance, we can look for other funding that we have available to expand the playgrounds, one or both of them. The initial direction to AZ Rec was to replace the playgrounds with ADA-inclusive designs, not to expand them. So, we wanted to use the current footprints that we had, we wanted to use the current shade that we had, we wanted to spend our money on the equipment as opposed to replacing the shade that is in good shape, so we can look at additional shade options. One thing that we did do is we had to order the equipment because we were up against an industry lead time that was expanding on us daily, and so to get this project done by January, we did order the equipment for the design that you saw tonight. That said, we can, if we find funding, we can expand that, even if we do the Pour-in-Place, we can do, as Lindsay mentioned, maybe a Phase Two, which could even be this current fiscal year, bringing back additional, expanding the footprint, pushing out the curbing of what's currently there, and adding new equipment, new shading, et cetera. So, the possibility is there. It would be, it would likely look like a Phase Two situation, though.
Do you have something?
Paul, may I help you?
Absolutely.
So, the one thing that we have to remember is, under CDBG, it's to remove barriers, and we make sure that we have ADA compliance, and there is Davis-Bacon rules and other rules, so there is a little bit of cost savings if this is a non-CDBG project. And we could do an attachment probably and add it on at the same time, cause it Phase Two, but complete it at the same time.
Thank you for that insight. Vice Mayor?
Well, first of all, watching these videos warmed my heart. I've watched my daughter, who has Down Syndrome and is autistic, be rejected by other kids playing because she couldn't do the same things that they can. So, to see this come to fruition is, like I said, it's heartwarming. The one thing I don't want to see that we've done in the past is that we get to this point where we have a project, and then we say we want this and this added to it, and then we don't see anything because we're wanting everything at once. I don't mind doing this and going to a second phase if we have to, and then incorporating all the other things that we want to add to that, that'll give us more time for finance to find money for us, whether it be this fiscal year, next fiscal year, if we get started, that's a step forward, and I think we need to keep going forward. And that's all I got.
I agree with you. Councilmember Larson?
So, obviously, you talked about the swing issue. My only concern, well, I had a couple of concerns. First of all, I think it's been echoed here that the process, and I don't care if I'm on council, if it's the next council, the process has got to change, guys, like it really does, that we are being asked to approve the pouring, you've already ordered the product, and yet we've never, even when I saw the agenda, never seen the design. That is a problem. That is a problem, because when you're asking us to approve something that's already been purchased, when we have things, we could have brought this up, and we could have said, hey, we don't like this design, or we don't like that design, or can we move this or move that way, can we expand this footprint? We could have had this conversation, but now we're at the finish line, and stuff's already ordered, and I agree, this stuff needs to be done, I'm glad it's being done, but this doesn't work, not for us, not for the people before us, not for the people after us, it's not gonna work. And it's really frustrating to, again, be at this point where we see, yes, we want this, we want this done, but not only do we think this is amazing, we want to make sure that everybody thinks it's so amazing, everybody has these great opportunities that are being presented, and we want to be able to expand on it, let's do it all. And we possibly could even have that opportunity, but now we're at the finish line, being asked to sign off on something that I don't think wholeheartedly, we all agree with, there's things we'd like to add. We want to take the steps, but there's just not quite there. So, just wanted to express my frustration with that, because it seems like that's been eight years running, at least in my tenure, and it's something's got to give. Number two, my concern was, you're talking about pouring. When I'm looking at these design videos and all of these videos here, it looks like they are segmented pieces that are laid down. It doesn't look like they're poured. Is what we saw in the video a poured substance, or is that different than what's being presented?
The brown one is the poured one.
Well, I saw ones that looked like they're squares.
The green ones were the squared put in.
So, there were, in the different videos, there was different surfacing used between them, and the first one, kind of the introduction to Unlimited Play, I believed they used the rubber tiles, which are not what we would recommend for a park in Arizona, because the weather and the heat is just going to make them warp over time, and it starts making trip hazards, and kind of defeats the whole purpose of creating an inclusive environment. The second video, Frontier Park, showed the poured rubber surface, which is flat and is poured on-site. It's basically into a concrete mixer with an adhesive, the little pieces of rubber, and then that's kind of a wet mixture that gets poured and troweled down to the right depth. And at Heritage Park, we would have a combination of that poured rubber and engineered wood fiber, which both meet ADA regulations for accessibility. The poured rubber is our favorite for accessibility, but the engineered wood fiber is definitely acceptable as well for ADA. We don't, we did not have it in the budget for the grant to make the entire footprints of the park all poured rubber. It is a fairly expensive product, and the parks are large, especially the five to 12 area, it's a pretty large area to cover. So, we maximized as many square feet that we could that was available in the grant for the poured rubber, and then the remaining outskirts areas are the engineered wood fiber, but there are no tiles.
Thank you. And to segue off of that, as you mentioned, my other concern was repair replacement costs, because I do know that that poured rubber, they tend to pick at it, or even the weather cracks it, or things of that nature. Can you talk to me about our budget going forward to make sure that we can repair, replace whatever damage was done via vandalism or natural causes?
Yeah, it's a great question. You know, we do, in our parks budget, we do put in our operating funds the allowance for considerations for vandalism and unintended damage in any of our amenity equipment, playgrounds included. So, we would work with playground companies and make sure that we understand the costs for the patches, and then put that into our operating funds. They often, they usually come with a kit initially anyway, that's a kind of a patch kit for that purpose, so we would definitely consider that in our operating funds.
Do you have an estimate? Do you guys typically do the repair for these type of things, or is this an outside other company that comes in to do those type of repairs?
Sure. So, we absolutely do provide that service. We subcontract out to a specialist that all they do all day, every day, is the poured rubber. They have a substantial warranty that is a five-year warranty, but it doesn't cover vandalism acts, it covers sort of acts of God, if you will, and just other standard things, wear and tear. If there's obvious evidence that it was a vandalism activity, they don't necessarily cover that, but they're local in Arizona, they're in Tempe, so they're very available, readily available. We usually can get them within a week to two weeks scheduled and completing the work, so it's not like we're flying in a company from Texas or from the East Coast. They're locally owned and operated, and we've worked with them for 10 years or more, so they're substantial, and they have a really great reputation in the industry.
So, I think your question was partially about what is future maintenance costs, and how does that impact the Pour-in-Place rubber surfacing for your project specific? The company that we use, Arizona is not a fair, you know, state for a lot of those kinds of products. So, it's rough on shade, it's rough on rubber, it's rough on car paint, it's a bear. So, they have a service that's called Clean and Seal. Okay, so, this is a urethane-based product, so it's a granulated rubber, okay, that they mix in almost like a concrete mixer. So, they pour the sacks of rubber in, and they pour the urethane in at a particular ratio to get the proper consistency, so they can put it down, they literally trowel it down like you would a sidewalk, it's just, it's rubberized. So, what happens, because it dries out, okay, it's mainly the drying out of the urethane, it doesn't impact the rubber granular pieces at all. So, part of the Clean and Seal is to come in and pressure wash the whole area, and then they take the same urethane that they mix it with originally, it's called aliphatic urethane, if anyone cares, but it's the strongest urethane that's available. And they re-trowel it down over the entire area, and what that does is go back in. So, what happens with rubber is like if you took a car tire and just threw it out in your backyard, okay, six months, if you went to grab it, you would get black stuff all over your arm, because it's like a dry rotting of the rubber, it's just purely drying out the urethane. So, by applying the new urethane over it, it goes in and it seals all the cracks, so that the rubber becomes pliant again, because it, as it dries out, it becomes more brittle, okay? By putting the new urethane down, it gives it that elasticity that you wanted all along to begin with, and the lack, the drying out also causes it, because of lack of elasticity, it starts to crack more as you walk on it. When they seal it, it seals all the cracks. Okay, so, when you add a Clean and Seal, that extends your warranty two more years every time you do it. So, it's pretty much recommended that every two years for the life of it, okay, that you would get a Clean and Seal, okay? And a Clean and Seal is roughly about $2 a square foot, okay, to have that done. So, I think we have, what, 500 or 600 square feet, something like that? 1,500 square feet. So, every couple of years, it would be approximately like $3,000 to have that service done. It's a one-day service, they come in, they clean it, they seal it, it's done, okay? But it gives you another two years, okay, that if anything happens to it, like a defective material or something like that, they would replace it. Okay, so, I don't know if I've answered your question, but I'm happy to answer any other questions about it.
I appreciate that thorough answer, and I think you preemptively answered my next question, so I appreciate it. My concern was just that, is it cracks, and then these kids come in, and they're bored, waiting for their sibling to get down, go on the slide, and they start picking at the cracks, and all of a sudden, you've got a gauging.
You're exactly right. So, the Clean and Seal thing is, if there's like a little, you know, like a segment of it that was to pull it out, when they come back, they have the ability to fill that in right there while they're doing it. So, the other thing that Clean and Seal does by pressure washing it, okay, it takes all the oxidized top, you know, just that the sun just kind of bakes out of it, and it kind of revitalizes it, it puts a fresh face on it, and then they seal that color back in. So, it's a great service, I recommend, about two years in that you schedule it, they can usually get it done within about a two-week timeframe any time of year. So, as Lindsay said, they're a local company, they're right in Tempe, and we have a great relationship, so we can get them pretty quick.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Are there any additional question or comments? All right, I want to thank you for coming out and presenting this evening, and very impressed with the product that you're bringing forward.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, I think it's gonna be really exciting, and I absolutely understand your comments about some of the other things, swings and the roller slide, and if I may, just really quickly, specifically about the roller slide, I did look back through the footprint, and the existing shade is covering the entirety of the roller slide, and I believe that rollers are rubber-coated as well, correct? Yeah, so, I understand it still may get hot, play equipment gets hot, whether, no matter what material it is, but anyways, I just wanted to briefly make sure you knew that, so, thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the councils, thank you very much for your questions and comments. I'll work with finance and city administration to continue the conversation on playground options.
Thank you, Mr. King. Item C is presentation of a service award recognizing Andrew Salazar Jr. for 20 years of dedicated service to the citizens of the Town of Florence, in honor of his commitment and contributions, and in celebration of his retirement in the Town of Florence.
Both items have been tabled to the next meeting, I left you a note, I apologize.
There is no note. You texted me, didn't you?
No, I wrote it on an agenda and left it on your desk, so somebody might have grabbed it.
I apologize, I, it's not on here.
That's all right.
Yes, no, I brought my own.
Okay. We had a, we had a police incident tonight, and so, since all of the police officers were out and about, we decided that we would rather have their entire team here to honor them, so we did ask for both of those retirements to be pulled to the next meeting.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I do see some people in the audience that came to support them, so, thank you for being here, and I'm sorry that I was not aware of that, I would have announced it earlier. Item seven is our consent agenda, and all items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless there is a member of the council or public that objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval to enter into 25-010 CUC Heritage Park Pour-in-Place Rubber, this is grant-funded, cooperative use contract to purchase Pour-in-Place rubber surfacing for new playground equipment at Heritage Park in an amount not to exceed $64,938.72. Mr. Paul King presented on this. At this time, I don't see or hear anybody objecting or wanting that item removed, so we need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agendas.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is new business. First up is item A, Resolution Number 1918-24. This is a discussion, approval/disapproval of adopting a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, affirming the approval of the final plat amendment for Merrill Ranch Unit 59C. This is PZ 24-33, Ms. Maricela Benitez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, we have on this agenda two different final plats for Anthem at Merrill Ranch 15, this one is specifically for Unit 59, it's a separate part. The only reason we brought this back, it hasn't quite been recorded yet, the Polte's, the developer, wish to expand seven lots from 114 feet to 115 feet, and of course, the final plat must reflect this change, and because this is a final plat, it needs a council-adopted resolution, and thus, we brought it back to council for your approval. And that's it. We do have representatives online from Polte and Jared Baxter Engineering.
All right. Councils, you have any questions? Okay, with that, we need a motion.
Make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 1918-24.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B is Resolution Number 1919-24. This is discussion, approval/disapproval of adopting a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, affirming the approval of the final plat. Penale County, affirming the approval of the final plat. Amendment from Merrill Ranch Unit 59A, PZ 24-34, Ms. Benitez.
It, this is a similar case to what we just discussed. They're changing several lots from 114 feet to 115. Nothing else is changing.
All right, any questions or comments? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution 1919-24.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. If you're wondering what we were passing back and forth, my agenda says eight for new business, and printed online it says six for new business, so we were just clarifying that. It's really nothing, it's just the way that it was documented, doesn't impact any business that's occurring. Next up is item C. Item C is discussion approval disapproval of the preliminary plat for the northwest corner of Merrill Ranch Parkway and Hunt Highway with the following conditions, Ms. Maricela Benitez.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, this one is different from the other two. And I have a short presentation. So this is the northwest corner of Merrill Ranch and Hunt Highway, Merrill Ranch Parkway and Hunt Highway. This is the lands that occupy right behind Circle K, but before Unit 41, that Meritage Home is developing. This piece of land is outside the Anthem at Merrill Ranch planned unit development, and it is owned by Legacy Collateral LLC. They are looking to subdivide the current parcels into 10 new ones. This is all for commercial development in the future. These parcels will have access from Hunt Highway as well as from Merrill Ranch Parkway. A row roof that will be established in between all the parcels, there will be an agreement of cross access, so all parcels, even though singled out, will have ability to access across every single piece of property, so you'll have shared parking, you'll have shared access, and people can move about that commercial development. This is the design for the parcel on your left. There'll be a larger one for if in the future someone wishes to subdivide it more, that can be possible, but for now it's going to stay as a larger parcel. At this time, there are no developers looking to purchase it, or not. They are looking and seeing and waiting to see how this preliminary plat goes, as well as it moving through into the final, before putting in for pads for development. On the right hand side, they did do a traffic impact statement in order to see how traffic would come in and come out through this development. All parcels are zoned for highway business commercial, which is pretty much our highest commercial zoning, which allows for all of this commercial business. Circulation is there among the different parcels at the, from Merrill Ranch Parkway as well as from Hunt Highway. And the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this preliminary plat at a special meeting on September 26. The commissioners forward a unanimous recommendation of approval with the conditions listed in the staff report. They did have some questions about ingress and egress off of Merrill Ranch Parkway, but staff is currently working with them on fixing some of those access points. We do have the applicant Seth Keeler here to answer any questions as well. With that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you for that very comprehensive presentation. Council, do you have any comments or questions? Councilmember Adam.
Yes, I have a comment, and this goes to what Commissioner Larson had brought up earlier, and it's our process. So this was a special meeting held on September 26. We don't have any minutes, we don't have any notice in the staff report whether the public was there, if there were any comments. Now, I did go back and review the videotape, so I know there weren't, but I would like to see a process where if we're not going to have the minutes, I would like to see that anything being brought to council has a line that says the public either was there or wasn't there, and any comments they may have made. And I say this because I spoke as a member of the public when we had the drive-through coffee situation. My comments did not make the staff report, they did not make the minutes. Had I not been on council, council wouldn't have known that a citizen spoke up and had an issue with it. So my reason for saying this is we are all trying to encourage our citizens to speak up, and the best place for them to speak up is at P&amp;Z before it gets four months down the road, right? We want to be business friendly, we also want to validate their opinions. I feel like they're not being respected, and I, as a council member, I always want to know what the public thinks. So that would be my comment.
I echo your sentiments. Councilmember Buchalado.
I also was going to say the same thing, because we've had this discussion many times before, but even the recommendations on what they thought was wrong with the ingress and egress would have made such, it would, it would have been huge towards our decision. We were asked to make, you know, to approve or disapprove of this tonight, and we don't have any of the information, and it's something that they're still working on, so is it really to this point? Can we really say it's to this point right now? Because in the past, we've talked about developers, and we've said how much of a problem we have with ingress and egress on Hunt Highway already, and we've sent it back, and we're still waiting for that to come before us, and then another one is brought forth, and we don't even know what the comments are. So it's really hard to make a decision when we don't know if we're even to that point to make a decision on this yet.
Commissioner Lehman was very specific about getting in and out of Circle K. I guess he cuts through however he goes there, and there's no detail about that in here. So if there is a sticking point, I think it would be helpful to have a very good description of what the sticking point is and what the action is. And as Commissioner Buchalado said, it's uncomfortable to make a decision and approve or not approve when we're not even sure what the issue is.
I'm hearing you say you want to table it until you have a solution, is that correct?
I would, I would recommend that we table it until we get the detail and the resolution.
Can I just see before, I guess what I'm confused by is that there was no comments by the public, right? There was...
I did not hear, I reviewed the videotape, and I did not hear any.
Okay, and then what my concern was the ingress and the egress, and so going back to that slide, if you could, there's the one where it shows, and I honestly didn't care for the way that was designed, because it's very confusing to me, and just personally, I have to stare at it a little bit more. But no, what I'm understanding you describe is that this, can you, can you break out for me real quick? This bottom right corner, is that Circle K?
Yes, this is Circle K.
Okay, so you said that there's going to be where there's connectivity between all the parcels, can you outline that for me?
So this road right here?
That's a road, okay.
Yep, and then you have one, two, and then this comes all the way back, and then here's an entrance, I believe where Circle K is, and then here's the other one.
Now, the other, these ones are already existing, am I understanding correctly? The one that's drawn there to the left of the square where it comes out?
Right here.
That's already the existing exit, correct? I'm guessing so.
There's a curb cut, yeah, yeah.
There's a curb, there's a curb cut, and it says no entrance on, or no exit on the other, the first one, okay.
But people exit all the time, and sometimes they end up in oncoming traffic.
Uh huh, yep. But I don't think that there's a way to fix that at this point anyway, because that's already going to be there, it's already done, it's already approved, so that's not going to be an issue. My issue, going back over to this right hand picture, because I'm just verbally walking this through, because if I don't see an issue here and nobody's commented on it, I don't see any point in holding off on it personally, but I guess what...
I believe Commissioner Lehman did comment, but I can't say specifically it was what you brought up.
Okay, do we know what his comments were? You were there.
His comments were about the median break in the middle, so over here on the left hand side.
That one.
That one right there, the median is right there.
Yes.
So if people want to come back around, they go down, they go take a left, make the U-turn, and then come back up to the light. So they're saying if there is a possible way to get a median break or not, and that was the question that came up that night.
But that's not really pertaining to this parcel split necessarily, because it's already designed, and it's already approved, and that's already done, my understanding, or is that something that we could ask for later, or ask for now?
The median break, or is this changing of the driveway?
I'm asking, as a whole, if we were to approve this, would we have the option to bring up the issue of the median break? Because I see this issue today, as we stand with Circle K, so this isn't going to be getting anything but worse going forward. I have no problem, I love the idea of splitting these parcels, I just want it on record, love the idea. Love the idea of all these different businesses being able to come in there, it's great for economic development, this is, I love it. But I am concerned about the entrance and exits down south especially onto that intersection.
This is something that we can still work in, this is preliminary plat still, this is not final plat, so changes can still be made between the preliminary and the final plats. And then you guys get another chance to look at that final plat when it comes back.
Okay.
But once you permit something to go forward...
You can make it a condition that we work with them to look at something like this.
That's, that's the key right there.
That's the spot.
And you're making it so the next time there's, you know, like this is what we've discussed, this is the condition we raised, and you can see what changes have been made between the final and the preliminary.
Fantastic. Because I don't want to hold up development. My thing is I want this to move forward, genuinely, I do. I just have concerns about the entrance and exit points, and so as long as that's something that we can move forward with?
Yeah, no, I agree with you, because a perfect example is not in the town of Florence, but it is in Santan Valley. If you go over where Home Depot is, salad and go to Home Depot, basically, drive through that parking lot, that's what I'm concerned is going to happen in Florence, when people just say, okay, and they take piece by piece at a time to say it fits, and now all of a sudden, you have cars going every which way, meandering eventually through a parking lot. And that's not ideal. All right, would somebody like to make that motion as it would be needed to be read with the conditional part? Okay.
Are you okay with it, Kathy, if I make it?
Help me out here, so I'll make a recommendation, excuse me.
Hold on, can we, we have the applicant here who would like to address them.
Hello.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for being here, and I apologize for not knowing that you were right there.
It's okay, not a problem. My name is Seth Keeler, I'm the applicant. Thank you for the discussion tonight, I appreciate it. My address is 1121 West Warner Road, Suite 109 in Tempe, 85284. I appreciate Maricela and working with staff, it's been a journey to just get to this point. We've covered a lot of ground, I believe, as we've gone through this process. There's been a lot of interest from the retail community, and like what Maricela mentioned, we get to a point where they say, well, what do you have for us? And when they find out that we have zoning in place, it's good, they want to know, well, what does it look like? We show them the plat, they say, well, is it approved? Well, not yet. So this is a very important step for us, to be able to go back to the retail community and say we have been moving forward. If tonight, if there was a possibility to receive approval, that would enable us to move forward towards development in this area. About the comment about access that came up at P&amp;Z, it was about the median, and that is clearly something that can be addressed as we continue forward, as we work with the Civil Department with the town of Florence. Ultimately, it's a decision that the town would have to make if there's a median break there or not, because like you've mentioned, it's already existing. So we're more than happy to work with staff and see if that's a, that's a solution that's available to us. I understand the concern about access, that's why we did the traffic impact study, just to make sure that we weren't crazy coming up with this idea, and it works from a traffic standpoint. We have three points of access, two of them are along Hunt Highway, one is along Merrill. We also have an existing access agreement with Circle K. So in addition to what we're proposing, there's still access with the existing Circle K that's already built. I think it was mentioned that there is an, you know, a benefit of the economic stimulation that this project could create, and we're excited about that. We've had discussions with a lot of the neighborhood services type, you know, coffee, for example, we've had a donut shop very interested, we've had daycare very interested, a chicken restaurant also very interested, so I think these would definitely be complimentary to the area. I think that if there's a concern about something that was mentioned in the P&amp;Z hearing, it's interesting to me that it was approved at P&amp;Z. The comment or the concern about access didn't prevent this member of the commission from giving a vote in favor of our project. I think if it was adversarial, and he would have abstained from a vote, or encouraged us to continue work, which we, which we're doing, working with staff. So we would, we would love to get a yes vote tonight if that's possible.
I'd just like to thank you, and I appreciate your comments, and I did watch the videotape, and I know you were very accommodating. My issue is how we report us, the town, to the council, because unless we watch that videotape, we're not privy to that. And what bothers me, not on this case, this is a relatively minor point, but Commissioner Larson is exactly right, we have all kinds of issues, we don't want to make worse, sometimes it gets lost in translation, so if it didn't get documented at P&amp;Z as it should have before it came here, then it should be discussed and documented here so we know, and Commissioner Larson's concern is addressed. So I'm ready to make a motion unless, I'd make a motion that we approve, I guess it's PZ 22-45, with the condition that it's noted that median access has been requested to be reviewed as we go forward.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Counsel, before you vote, may I have a clarifier? There were three other conditions that were recommended by staff, are those also included?
I'll recommend that we make that with the condition of reviewing the median break and the conditions as written by staff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, thank you. Item D is discussion approval disapproval of entering into a cooperative use contract with K E and G Construction via the Town of Moreno Job Order Contract, JOC 2022-014, for water and sewer repair, replacement, and installation services for the construction of a temporary bypass affluent line to the recharge basins at the Southwest Water Treatment Plant in an amount not to exceed $141,350. Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This, this project is part of kind of a much larger project, it's going to be happening at the wastewater plant, and some of the improvements that are identified in the town's CIP, this project will allow us to remain permit compliant while some of those other projects are going to be designed and constructed as outlined in the most recent ADQ inspection. So this, this, this project is just about being permit compliant under our current existing ADQ permits, the APP specifically, aquifer protection permit.
Are there any questions or comments? All right, with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve entering into a cooperative use contract with K E and G Construction via the Town of Moreno Job Order Contract, JOC number 2022-014, for water and sewer repair, replacement, installation services for construction of a temporary bypass affluent line to the recharge basin at the Southwest, sorry, SWCT, SWWTP, in an amount not to exceed $141,350. A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have our town manager report.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. Just wanted to...
Just wanted to apologize tonight. I was a little tardy, but my duties required me to go with me to another location tonight just to go and handle a situation that arose. I'd like to go ahead and thank council for repeatedly talking about Make a Difference Day throughout the year and what a difference it made. Under the leadership of Paul and his team, we had over 200 and something citizens come out to go and participate in this event. Had an opportunity to go around and drive and talk to the various citizens and also at lunch. Not one person had a negative thing to go ahead and say about this event. So, I just wanted to applaud council, number one, for making sure that you stayed on top of this and two, for Paul and his team for an outstanding event. Thank you.
Thank you. Call to the council. Councilmember Adam? Oh, I apologize, I circled it. This is our second call to the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak at this time? Ms. Sherry Har.
Good evening, council. My name is Sherry Har. Born and raised in Florence. Regarding the Make a Difference Day, I was glad to see a lot of people showed up. I did not this year due to personal reasons, but I know that we've talked about this for a couple of years and some recommendations were made that we do this more than once a year. I know it gets really hot, you know, in our lovely state of Arizona, but maybe we can do it two times during the first quarter, you know, second quarter, and then two times like starting, you know, October and then do it maybe in December or something. But do it more than one time a year. I think we have 200-plus volunteers who would love to do this more than one time a year and I think it would help, especially if we have seniors that definitely could use all of our assistance. I know that two years ago, we helped a gentleman who's a veteran and we helped him clean his yard. He had a wife who was disabled and she's since passed, God rest her soul. But we did that two years ago and the gentleman was very hesitant at first. And luckily, Ms. Buchalato was there and she knew the family and she spoke to him and he let us go and clean his yard. Ms. Reese is the one who found the family and the house that needed to, the yard that needed to be done. And to this day, if you go on First Street, the gentleman's yard is still pristine. He keeps it up all the time. And to me, he came out there and helped us clean. He was very prideful and I think that makes a huge difference on people if they can see that we do care as well and we're not there to judge them, but we're there to assist them. So, if we could do it more than once a year, I think that would be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Seeing no further, I'm going to go ahead and close the second call to the public and open it up to a call to the council. Councilmember Adam?
Well, I'd like to start out by thanking and commending Director Paul King. We were at Padilla Park on our first Third Friday in the cold and the wind. The weather was not cooperating, but I will tell you, I thought we got a very good turnout. I thought Keith Ray did a really great job with the food trucks and the bands. I walked up and down Main Street and I was a little bit hesitant about moving it to Padilla Park since we want everyone to visit our shops. And the three shopkeepers I talked to were pleased with the turnout. So, I think everybody parking on Main Street and walking to Padilla Park gets them into the stores. So, that was a big plus. As I said, with the Third Friday, I'm glad we're continuing that and I think it's going to be very popular once the weather gets better. I want to give another shout out to you and your team and especially Mr. Bebo. We're talking about the Florence Makes a Difference Day. In all my years of doing this, 200 volunteers and the coordination and planning was impeccable. And when Sherry Har is talking about doing a private home, what made this work so well was the multiple trucks. We had two pickup trucks and we had a truck with a trailer come by four times, right? And that's what made it work. It couldn't have been better. Your team was coming by with water and more trash bags and everything else we needed. It's that kind of effort. It's pretty huge. I love the idea of doing this more than once a year, but I'm going to tell you, it would be hard for me and my group to do it. We have, that we're working on, but I'd love to see that. I think it's a great thing for the, especially the seniors and vets and those that can't take care of your yard. Last thing I wanted to mention is I know the chief has a Have Coffee with the Florence PD coming up on October 30th. They're going to be at the Starbucks in Anthem at 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
First off, I'd like to start out by thanking our Florence Fire Department. My mom's had a little problem with her insulin. They showed up, ready, professional, just some great dudes every time. So, big shout out to the Florence Fire Department. Gophers unfortunately took a setback Friday and took their first L of the season. I truly believe they were better than the team they played. I think that two-week layoff hurt them real bad, but also probably could be a lot of motivation if they could catch them in the playoffs. So, still support them Gophers. I think they still can go a long way. Make a Difference Day, I did make it and I shoveled all kind of rocks. I don't like rocks anymore. I don't like rakes. But I had a, actually, I had a great time. Actually, it was very fun. We did the Vining Jones Library, rocked the tree part out there. I don't know what it's called, but it was cool. It was really good. A lot of volunteers. Honestly, had a very good time and I do think we should do it more than once a year. Thank you. Go Gophers.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you to Florence Copper for those tremendous shirts y'all gave us out on Saturday. Thank you to my two fellow council members that were able to make it out. Neil, Councilmember Neil, and Councilmember Adam. I unfortunately didn't work as hard as they did, but I did get to talk to the Air Force Vet on First Street and he was, I learned, he taught me a lot and just in a little bit amount of time that I got to talk to him. And I did get to go around to a lot of the different sites and talk to the, to some of the residents and they were very grateful, just like Chief Wall said. And I got some photo ops, so I'll be sending them to you, Jeff, probably after the meeting. But thank you for all the folks and I kind of put a charge out. I know Ms. Har wanted kind of us to do this kind of more than once a year. I know it takes a lot to do this and I just put a charge out there to the, to some of the non-for-profits that are out there. This would be a great opportunity for them to rise to the occasion. And if they don't know how to do it, I'm sure Mr. King will give them kind of like the building blocks to be able to do it. So, I think it could be done. It's just, I know that it's, a lot goes into this, but I think some of the non-for-profits that are out there can step up to the challenge and I know they will. Second, thank you for all the kids that came out there. Just talking to some of the kids and them wanting to give back was tremendous from the first time I did this years ago. And just talking to some of the kids and some of the, just talking to them about some of their aspirations and it was a great way for them to give back and a lot of them were very grateful. And a lot of them weren't just doing it just for their hours because a lot of them had to do volunteer hours in school. So, a lot of them, you could tell that they were actually having fun doing it and with their peers. And I got to talk to the coach from ALA. So, this is something that I'm glad we're doing. I love the Gophers, but it's nice that, you know, we got the Titans in there too now. So, and the kids just, they genuinely wanted to do good things at these folks' homes. So, my sincere thanks go out to those kids and the coaches that were out there with them. And finally, thank you to the other Paul, Paul Felkler. He's our new director for the chamber. I commend him on his new job and I know he'll do good things. So, good luck, Paul. Other Paul.
He was out there at Third Friday, by the way, and he hasn't started his job yet. So, I thought that was pretty cool.
Councilmember Buchalato?
You went out of order tonight, so I wasn't ready. So, I just wanted to say thank you for those that did attend Make a Difference Day. I unfortunately am not cleared yet too and I didn't want to show up and just take pictures and wave. So, I did not make it, but I will be there next year. I do agree that is something that could be done twice, maybe three times a year. And as Maldonado was mentioning, there are a lot of students that have to get 20 hours of community service and a lot of them do more than that. But there's always a rush at the end of senior year to get it done because it's something the procrastinators put off. So, I think with the right person reaching out to the organizations, honor society, teen council, I think it definitely could be done. I would be willing to help make it happen more than one time a year. So, just thank you to everybody who participated in that. Reminder, homecoming is this Friday, so the parade will be happening at 1:00 down Main Street. And if you can, go support the kids at their homecoming at 7:00 at night? 7:00 on Friday. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Larson?
Echo very short sentiments about Make a Difference Day. I apologize I wasn't there this year, but it is so awesome to see how this grew from a little idea, talking at a bench, to being able to be 200 people that are showing up and continual requests for it to happen more times than once a year. There is an extensive amount of planning that goes into this, meetings and organization and finding out projects and who needs help and getting consents or to be able to work on a project to get the, like all of the trucks out there, to be able to get all of the dumpsters out there. I mean, just everything that goes into this. So, I want to say first of all, thank you so much for all of your efforts to make this happen at all. I do love the idea of it happening two times a year, but it is a lot of an undertaking. So, even if as, I mean, I'd be happy as well, Nicole, to be able to help organize something else, maybe as side projects, maybe things that don't get completed or we can have one day. The thing that makes Make a Difference Day so amazing though is it's not just the projects. It's the energy that everybody brings to that room. I mean, it's, everyone shows up with such gusto to be able to be helping their community members and to be, it's not just picking up trash. I mean, anybody can do that. It's the energy that's brought. And I don't know what it is, but it's so electric. And so, if we can keep that going, I want to keep it going. So, that's really my piece about Make a Difference Day. Homecoming, you got it. And then there's also the Halloween festivities that are coming up here on the 31st. So, I just wanted to make sure to highlight that. It's a great family opportunity to come down in a safe environment, be able to trick-or-treat, trunk-or-treat, and be able to enjoy some family time downtown. So, just wanted to highlight that as well.
Perfect.
Myself and Mr. Chrisellis got the opportunity to go to the Rural Transportation Summit in Prescott this week. There was a lot of information that was given to us, a lot of things that we can implement. There's a lot of federal money out there for roads that we can start working on. Made some good contacts with a lot of different House of Representatives and senators and the governor was there. It was the first time in 25 years that a governor attended the Rural Transportation Summit, so that was a big thing for the organization. Just need to put some stuff together and see what we can do for the town. That's all I've got.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. Everything has been covered with the exception of we have our 10-year celebration of Padilla Park coming up. So, I just wanted to share that. Hope to see everybody there and I'm assuming pretty soon we'll also have our 10-year coming up for the Aquatic Center and the library. There's just so much happening. Still coming up. All right. I do not have anything additional. So, with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.